I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Tohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the September 25th, 2023 council meeting. Approval of the September 29th, 2023 payroll in the amount of $187,116.26. Acceptance of the beautification and commission minutes. Acceptance of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board minutes. Acceptance of the Personnel Committee minutes. Acceptance of the Environmental and Franchise Utilities Committee minutes. Resolution of promotion to Assistant Communications Specialist Supervisor. Approval of liquor license for Casey's number 4306 West and the Hy-Vee Market Grill. Approval of special claims, this is our WEX bill, in the amount of $3,856.91. And approval of claims in the amount of $452,481.23. We had one claim more than $75,000 to Wick's Construction Incorporated. This is for the Highway One project, in the amount of $213,802.95. Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I reviewed all the bills. Everything looks to be in order, so I recommend approval.
Okay, nothing else? Please call the roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Okay, under public forum and appearances, we have a request from Eric Moorhead. Is he here? Okay, does anybody know what this is in reference to?
He has a nuisance case pending. And when Weston and I met with him, we told him if he wanted to talk to counsel about it, he could come.
Okay.
I don't know if he will, but he apparently filled out the sheets.
Okay, well, since he's not here, I guess we will move on. Resolution, action items and ordinances. The first action item is consideration to award Ninth Street and Jefferson Avenue Water Main Improvements Project. And it looks like we have Steve here. Go ahead.
You want me to go ahead? You can go back on your agenda if you want. I guess I'm not an attorney, so I can say that for sure. I don't know if you've got the, you can open up the bid tab if you want. And we opened a whole big pile of bids on Thursday. We had 12 bids total for this project. And they came in very favorably for the city. Morris Enterprises out of La Grande, Iowa is the low bidder. I don't know if anybody has any questions, but I think if you want to, you can go ahead and vote to approve awarding the contract to Morris Enterprises.
So moved?
Okay, moved by Gandy to award the bid to Morris Enterprises. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen, any discussion?
Stephen, do you know why they, they came in under engineer rate estimate? Do you know why they came in so much lower than the estimate?
It's a good question. I will say that I've had probably three bid openings in the last three to four months. And I've had, this one had 12 bids. I had one in Knoxville with 11 bids. And I've had one coal mine project with six or eight bids. So I think that with the drought, all of the outside dirtwork contractors are all caught up and they have nothing to do. And so I think that's playing into it. And we've been seeing lots of bids and really low prices on these types of projects in the last several months. That would be my explanation. I did not ask them specifically, but they were at the bid opening and they, you know, were excited to start on the project, so.
And just for the record, what was their bid? Thank you.
Two oh four oh seven eight fifteen. So yeah, there were four bids under our estimate out of the 12, so.
Okay.
They have their ways, I will say. They are a boring contractor, and so if you kind of look through your bid, you'll see that they're not planning on really removing any pavement if they can help it, because they did that pretty much at a loss, I would say, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? No, please call the roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Okay, is Eric Moorhead here now? No? Okay, okay, just checking. Okay, so next action item is consideration to authorize Piper Sandler to distribute participant packet for sewer interim financing. Do you, do you have any?
Hi.
You going to mention that?
Sure.
Okay.
So this is for step three. Yes, we've started the project, but per USDA regulations, you have to pay for the whole thing before you can get a loan from them. So we do interim financing. We've done that with all of our USDA projects. So this is to get the ball rolling.
Okay, thank you.
How long were the interim loan before? Like three, four months, or?
It really kind of depends. I'm guessing the project probably won't be done until, what, fall of '24? Yes. So we'll have interim financing through that time.
So they'll pay for it after it's finished?
Yes. Well, we'll do a loan with USDA and pay off the interim financing.
So will we approve the distribution of the packets?
Second.
Okay, moved by Flornoy, second by Tohill. Any discussion? Now please call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next resolution, consideration to authorize traffic sign removal and installation. Melanie? Yeah, go ahead.
Which one?
The resolution.
Oh, this is the school thing?
Yes.
Yeah, oh, I can. So this is part of our report at the bottom of the Agenda for Public Safety and Transportation. We met on October 2nd at 5:30 PM, and a representative from Fairfield Community School District was there making a request of the city to switch the yield signs at Fifth and Fillmore and Sixth and Fillmore to stop signs. And at committee, we thought we needed an ordinance, comes to find out we just need a resolution, which is what's before you tonight. So Public Safety and Transportation would officially recommend removal of yield signs, change them to stop signs. And then within the resolution, you'll see that the school is also requesting to switch the heavy pullout stop signs that sit in front of Pence and on Fillmore in front of the middle school to permanent turnable signs like they have over by Washington. So they're trying to make things a little more user-friendly, a little more efficient. I guess they're sending custodians out every day to haul those signs in and out, middle of winter, freezing, sleet, you name it, they're out there moving those signs, so. The resolution before you, I'd make a motion to approve the resolution before you tonight to change Fifth and Fillmore and Sixth and Fillmore to stop signs.
Second.
And allow the schools to use turnable signs, which I think is also at the bottom of your resolution.
So the permanent ones are heading north-south, and the changeable ones will be east-west?
They're, the permanent ones are, yeah. And, well, it's not just east-west, so, I mean, it's in front of Pence two on six for north-south traffic.
Well, the resolution is just for stop signs, so what to do some promotion for?
No, they're both in there.
It's both in there.
But, so the reason why the change from the yield to the stops is so when the ones in front of the middle school are not activated, they will be turned towards Fifth Street, which is right now Fifth and Sixth Street, which are both yields now. So if we don't make this change, and they put in the turnable stop signs, when they're not activated, you'll have a stop on one side and a yield on the other side. So that's why we're requesting that change. Because then when they are activated, they'll be turned towards Fillmore to require the Fillmore traffic to stop, which is what the rollout stop sign was before.
Right, and the ones heading north and south will be permanent stop signs at all times?
On Fifth and Sixth, yes.
Yes.
Yeah. And so the school, they provide all the materials for these signs. They do the maintenance on them, they'll be responsible for the turning of them. Our street department has helped out by their doing the physical welding of the signs, because it's a sign post that's cut in half so that they can rotate it and lock it in the different positions. So our department has helped with that. But the school pays for everything.
Are these the same ones that are in South Main?
Yes.
Okay.
We're doing Fifth and Sixth, and then down here, we're doing the turnables.
Okay, I think we have a motion and a second. Any additional questions? Is it clear now?
Clear as mud. Sorry.
Okay, please call the roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, the next two resolutions, we've talked about these before. If you remember, we were, it has to do with, um, Fosty Partners. The, in North Campus Village, adding to one, taking away from the other. So the first resolution is just setting the consultation meeting?
We're setting the consultation meeting and the public hearing.
Yeah, do you want them separately or together?
Together.
Okay, so we're setting a consultation meeting, so that is a meeting with the taxing entities along with our city administrator, and that is proposed to be Tuesday, October 17th, 2023, at 10:00 AM. And that the public hearing would be Monday, November 13th, at 7:00 PM. So moved. Moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
And then the next resolution, fixing the date for a public hearing on the proposal to enter into Third Amendment to the Agreement for Private Development with Fosty Partners, LLC, and providing for publications. So again, this is Monday, November 13th, 2023, at 7:00 PM.
Move to set the public hearing?
Moved by Flornoy, second by Tohill. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Okay, so ordinance number 1232. This is the third and final reading for consideration of the Property Maintenance Code. Chapter 1710, you have the redline version, and additional language. So I think, Paul, why don't you talk about what happened with this? I think you should talk about it before I even open the public hearing, because I think that would be better.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the property committee held a meeting this evening in which a number of our citizens were present, as well as a number of city staff and council members. We discussed the proposed amendment to the Fairfield Property Maintenance Code, and there were good questions asked, and a good discussion was had with, with the dozen or so people who were present. I think we've made a tremendous amount of progress in our discussion. There's still some things we want to, as a committee and as a council, I think we want to think about, but I'm inclined to suggest that this is the way we want to move forward with the code, but not at this point. I do want to call people's attention, folks, the community's attention, to an excellent article written by our city administrator, Doug Reiner, in the October 6th, Friday, last Friday, edition of the Southeast Iowa Union, in which he introduced himself as a new city administrator from June. But he also spoke about the need for, or perceived need for, a property maintenance code. If you indulge me, Mayor, I just want to read a part of his letter, because it speaks exactly to why we're proposing this, why it's important. Many have requested the implementation of policies to maintain the city's appeal for both residents and visitors. We have proposed a property maintenance code that allows for all buildings, not just rentals, which have been part of our code for many years. The city often receives complaints about, from neighbors, about hazardous living conditions, trash, debris, and other concerns. The codes are not intended to be intrusive or for mistreatment, but rather serve as a tool to facilitate communication with citizens and provide guidance of maintaining safe living conditions. These codes help remind property owners that their living conditions can potentially harm or affect the well-being of their neighbors, or emergency personnel should they need to enter the home. The city works collaboratively with property owners to address these concerns and uses its code to encourage them to achieve a positive resolution. Our team works diligently with residents, offering advice with empathy and respect. We do not specifically target low-income households, the elderly, or any particular properties. Rather, our focus is to ensure the well-being of the entire city. It is rare when the city would request to enter inside your home. An occasion may be a report of an odor or sewage coming from a crawl space, or a report of a collapsed roof, or an incident that may cause alarm for safety. Our aim is to uphold fairness and consistency so all can be proud of our city. We kindly request your support and assistance in creating an improved city for future generations. Signed, Doug Reiner, Fairfield City Administrator. Very proud of that letter. And as I say, we had a very, very good discussion. We are, I'm going to recommend to the council that we take this for further advisement, table this, table this particular ordinance for allowing the committee to do further review. I suspect we're going to come back and recommend that we pass it as a third reading at the next meeting, but I like that additional time. And I asked the committee, this is actually my property committee report, to give us that additional time, so we might come back with the next meeting with our recommendation.
Okay. Point of order, John, since he's put a motion on the floor, should we just go ahead with that vote? Do I need to open the public hearing at this point, or?
You can have the hearing anytime.
Okay.
So you could do that and then go back to, you know, committee.
Okay, so at this time, I will open the public hearing for any comments from the public? Does anybody want to speak to the ordinance, just so you can be heard? Okay, if not, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move.
I'll second the motion to refer it back to committee.
Okay, great. So we do have a motion and a second to refer this back to committee for further discussion. And I just want to say I appreciate that motion for just more discussion, and so we get everyone feeling comfortable. So are there any questions or further discussion? Not, please call the roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, under the mayor's report, I would like to refer a lease agreement with Barbara Rainbow. This has to do with the community garden at Obie Nelson Park. And she did share with me a proposed lease agreement that I would like to refer this to the property committee. And I'll send these down to Paul. You know, she wants, you know, everything to be done properly, and so I would appreciate moving that to the property committee for review.
Thank you, sir.
So moved?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tohill? Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up is, just, this is to let you know that regarding the opioid settlement, the county has received $112,000. And it was discussed, I believe, this morning, I believe it was on the agenda of the supervisors this morning. DeSanquist certainly requested ideas. I know that it was also discussed at the alcohol and tobacco consumption meeting today. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend. The nice thing about that group is there are many community partners that, that go to that meeting, city, county, a lot of CETA partners, and, you know, there's a lot of programs with CETA. So I don't know if you guys want to talk about this in a committee meeting, or you, and discuss what you would like to see? I think that's useful. Or if you want to send me ideas, I, you know, personally would like to really understand what programs are really effective out there, where this money can go to. But I guess that's, that's the status right now. So how would, counsel, how would you like to proceed? You want to take it to, like, public safety as a discussion point?
I'm a little confused. You said the county received $112,000?
Yes.
What does the city?
The city and the county both are part of the lawsuit. However, when this, when the money comes, it only goes to the county to deal with. But I feel like, you know, the city should have some input.
We can make a recommendation or request to county to do certain things.
Yeah.
That's the purpose of this.
Yeah, that's, in my view. To give, you know, the county your opinion on, or you could say, hey, you could refer it to the alcohol tobacco committee meeting and say, you know, whatever they decide as a public health issue.
Who's on that committee? Who's represented on that committee is what I mean.
Well, public health, so Chris Estle's always there. There's usually somebody from the county. The sheriff's usually there, sometimes chief is there. I've been going, going to the meeting most of the time. I was not able to be there today. And then there's a lot of different representatives from CETA, because they have a lot of different programs. So there might be somebody who deals with just regular counseling, gambling, drug addiction. I mean, there's like, can be 20 people there.
Well, I'm trying to think of who, who in the city would have the expertise to sit on that committee and make a good recommendation?
Well, that's, you know, it's open to the public, so.
Well, I know, but it's too good to have a professional advice at some point.
Don't think we have any counselors here in our, on our city council. So that's why I thought if you want to take it to committee first and come up with some ideas, it's up to you, or we can see what they come up with. Anybody have a good, good feeling? Any suggestions, John, from your side?
Do we have a, does the city have a doctor?
Yeah.
We have a designated one.
Yeah.
Can't that person sit on the, represent us at the tobacco and alcohol?
Uh, he hasn't, but we could ask him.
I don't know, it's just an idea.
Okay. What do you think, counsel?
It's a good idea to ask, yeah.
Okay. I'll ask him.
Okay.
We'll see where it goes. Okay, so that's that. I want to mention that last week, we appointed a couple people to the Carnegie Museum Board, and they were replacing, I have the replacements now, Stan Plumb and Teresa Kaminsky. So that's who we're replacing. And those people were Joni Stever and Agadwin. John, John?
John.
Yeah. So, so there's that. And then the last thing is that I want to mention that I have a town hall planned for next Monday, October 16th, 5:15 here at City Hall. We're going to be talking about the Capital Improvements Reserve Fund, which will be on the ballot in November. So we're going to talk about what that means, what it does. We'll talk about assessed valuations versus taxable valuations. I do have a spreadsheet started that will show you our levies over the last 10 years. And I'm hoping that I'll get the city, county, hospital, schools to, you know, kind of put them all together, so, but we'll definitely have the cities.
So that's next Monday, the 16th?
That's next Monday, the 16th, 5:15 here. So get a press release out tomorrow, too. And that is all I have. So, city attorney report.
Couple things. Since the last meeting, I went to Arizona. So I wasn't here last week, but lots of things happened in my absence that were supposed to. We had the 208E ambulance board involved in the transition to the new Jefferson County ambulance service. And there were several vehicle titles basically executed and transferred. There was a payout to CARE ambulance service at a settled amount. It was less than the full amount due. There was some consideration given to the fact that there were months when there wasn't 100% service compliance, but most of the money, $79,000 out of 90, was paid. There is right now, and I just had a meeting with the county attorney this afternoon, and there'll be another one when Vanessa Willman is available, about a covenant not to sue that CARE's attorney has agreed with us should be done in a mutual way. There'll also be a mutual release and dismissal. And there should be a time, probably another meeting will go by, but when that whole lawsuit that's been in existence since last Christmas time will be dismissed. So we are satisfied generally that CARE ambulance did what they were supposed to as far as the transition, unless you heard something, Tom, while I was out west. But the care provider, as far as Mr. Bob Libby, who we've had some meetings with and so forth here as a group, did what he said he would do. And I think there might still be a little bit of some questioning about some radios as far as a separate contract when we acquired those in the first year that they were operating. And I'm not sure if they belong to the 208E, to the care provider, or to Jefferson County or the law center. So that will be sorted out, but it's not something that's going to make any difference as far as the ultimate end of the disagreements. So that's positive report on the 208E transitioning. My understanding is that the new ambulance service is completely installed out at the former drive-through First National Bank setup, and the ambulances are parked in the bays, and there's people out there, full 24-hour shifts. So other than that, the city, we're transitioning a little bit with a new magistrate. We had the benefits of magistrate Steve Small, who worked with us for about the last 10 years. We had a very positive relationship. I think Weston McKee and the prior code enforcement officers probably became well acquainted with the magistrate as far as us having something up in court every week with. with the magistrate as far as us having something up in court every week with numerous nuisance cases, but not overwhelming numbers of nuisance cases. Weston generally affords two or three bites first as far as notice letters, then a letter that's a courtesy letter indicating that if we don't see a more positive action, that he'll have a citation issue and it'll, it'll bring me into the picture, too. But we've had a nice working relationship with a magistrate judge for all those years. He retired. He didn't have any choice. The state code said so. And we have a new magistrate. Name is Phil Parsons. He's an area gentleman whose family lives up in the Richland area. His mom was the main desk person out at Reef Grain and Feed for decades. Maybe some of you knew Nancy Parsons. But his practice has involved him working out of Washington, Iowa, Rick Bordwell's office up there in recent years. But he's decided to do this part-time. It's made a little difference. Magistrate Small handled city court on Tuesday morning and Thursday morning. Right now, if we have things that are going to require trials, which we do have some that are scheduled out there before too long, we are going to have the benefit of him all day Thursday, but not necessarily Tuesday unless there's something specially scheduled by the court administrator. So on the nineteenth, we'll have our first trial in front of him. It happens to be a trial that has a couple issues in it. One is, it's about having somebody comply with our ordinance as far as a permit to build a deck. The person is a sovereign citizen, so part of the trial is going to involve dealing with some motions that we have to treat it as frivolous as far as counter filings that have been made. I think we have right now at least seven different city employees that have been named in some way on these, plus the county attorney and the former magistrate, Steve Small. So hopefully those will all be resolved at that trial on the nineteenth, plus the court will issue an order to either get the permit or pay the penalties. Or there's also the possibility, if you don't comply with something the court tells you to do, that there can be a sentence imposed. Aside from having a new judge, the court over there is, right now, I think, making some decisions about whether there are some cases where we have what we call split jurisdiction. And for instance, the court has jurisdiction up to six thousand five hundred dollars on things it can make people do. We, right now, have one of our cases that is a six fifty-seven A case, that one of the money questions in the case involves eighteen thousand three hundred dollars. That money was put in reserve years ago for possible demolition of a house or restoration of a house. That will go from some of the questions that were magistrate nuisance questions to a district court judge or an associate district court judge if it's specially assigned. I'm not sure which way that's going to work yet, but we probably, if we use more of what is called the six fifty-seven A remedy, which is the next strongest remedy we have to condemnation under eminent domain, we'll just have to see how that works. And right now, our local, one of our local judges, Judge Guken, is the chief judge of the district, and I expect he's the one that ultimately will decide how that's going to work for us in the future. So that's probably enough for now, but anyway, we'll let you know how we come out on the nineteenth.
Great, thank you. Committee and board reports, public and safety and transportation. Do you want anything?
We pretty much touched, we had two agenda items. One item, we ended up not being able to take any action on as far as bringing information to council, and we've already dealt with the other, so.
Great.
We have another meeting scheduled in November. I can't remember the day.
The ninth.
Ninth, okay. Yeah, we had set a meeting and I had something come up in conflict, so we'll meet again on the other topic and hope to have more details in November.
Great, thank you. Environmental and franchise utilities?
Yes, we met on October five here at City Hall, Councilwoman Ham and myself. The mayor asked me to preside in the absence of former Councilwoman SD. City Administrator Reiner was also present, as well as Marg Dwyer with the resilient management team. And Marg presented to the committee the annual report from the sustainability coordinator, which you have in front of you. And I'll just highlight a couple of the items here that the coordinator had accomplished in her first year with the team. So she was hired in the early summer of last year after several months of interviewing many people. And her first job was to reach out to the community and make contact with as many people as possible, identify various projects that were going on in the city, and establish those relationships. Then together, we sat down and built a model for resiancy for this community, and you'll see that on the back page at the top. And then we had to populate that model. So we then went about identifying individuals who could sit on various committees in those circles that have various names on them. And we called that group of individuals, about fifteen people probably or more, the resilience action committee. And so they started meeting in May, I think, on a monthly basis. And each of those circles represents a subcommittee, and they meet each also separately away from the main team and bring back information. So the job of that team for us is to create, at the end of three years, a plan, resilience plan for the city of Fairfield that we can bring to the city, to the county, and other interested individuals as a recommendation or suggestions for the various governing bodies to, to look at and consider. And we also were able to hire two AmeriCorps members. We started this process last fall, and through various hoops and reasons for delay, we weren't able to hire anybody until this summer because of the way they structure the internships are for nine months. They typically run during the school year, September to May or June. And then we can get them for another three months in, in May, or, sorry, June, July, August. So we hired two people in, I think, July. They went to training in September, and they are on board now and working already. We want to thank MIU for providing housing space for those two individuals, as well as a sustainability coordinator. What's the name of the building they're in?
Gatebridge.
Gatebridge Building, which is on the west side of Highway one, as you're, right before you get to the pedestrian bridge. So if you have any questions about that, details, Mark's here to answer any questions for you. So Pathfinders was our fiscal agent last year, and they decided, the three of us, the sustainability coordinator, the management team, and Pathfinders, decided that that arrangement was not going to go forward. And so we were left with the dilemma of having someone to act as a fiscal agent for the sustainability coordinator position. So we entered into conversations with City Administrator Reiner and inquired if we could create a position for the city or under the city's authority and have the city act as a fiscal agent. And we went through a few meetings and we worked out a job description, and he agreed that that would be possible. So we'd like to ask the council to approve that arrangement where the position would be paid as prior through private donations and contributions from the university and the city. And that person would answer to the, administratively answer to the city administrator, but the management team would work with the new coordinator on a day-to-day, week-to-week basis, and that person would act somewhat independently, much in the same way that Weston acts independently when he does his job.
What does it mean to be a fiscal agent?
Just handle payroll and benefits and that sort of thing. The real advantage there is that that person would also come under all the rules and regulations that other city employees have. And so there is a system for tracking hours, there's a system for maintaining control of that individual.
To be a city employee.
Rules and regulations, if you will.
To be a city employee, would there be additional costs to the city in terms of insurance and so forth?
Those are all.
Well, the, we raised money to cover all those costs.
So there won't be additional cost to the city, no additional time to the city, it'd be compensated?
Well, processing payroll.
Processing payroll. It's just one, it's just one more person on a fairly large payroll.
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear that we're not.
That's a good question.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
We're taking, we're being a fiscal agent, but it's not going to be, it's not an additional burden to the city.
No.
Does that go for work comp as well?
All of the, yes.
All of it?
Mm-hmm. So the total cost, we asked Rebecca to calculate the total cost, and we are going to assume those costs.
I first retirement, all of those things.
We, this group or we, the city, are going to assume the cost?
This group will.
This group will.
The group will, okay.
Okay.
Which means includes the city as part of the.
Well, the city is a portion of that group, so, yes.
What does that look like on our audit? Like, are we running a separate account for this?
They would be paid out of the refuse account.
Solid waste.
Recycling refuse.
Okay.
And that's where the money would go for Pathfinders into that?
Well, the.
Wherever it comes from.
Last year, when the city voted to support that position to the tune of fifteen thousand dollars, it came out of the solid waste fund. That fund typically has a balance on the order of two hundred thousand dollars, the last time I looked, which, I haven't looked recently today, but usually it's on the order of two hundred thousand dollars. The only obligation, I think, out of that fund is to pay part of one employee's salary.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Correct.
I don't know what, how much that is every year, but there's a person who spends their time on managing the billing and all that sort of thing, and so we can justify paying their salary out of that fund because that individual is working on activities that are associated with the money that, or that revenue that's generated by that, or the revenue generated by her activities or his activities comes into that fund, so we can justify paying part of their salary through it.
So we can put the money from the donations and everything that helps support this position can go into that fund?
That's the intention. Yes.
And that's okay, Rebecca?
We reached out to the auditor and asked, and he said we could do that.
It'd be.
Is it going to be dollar for dollar? I mean, this, in your notes, and I get it, these are notes, are minutes, it's say forty-eight thousand more or less to come from Pathfinders. Would it be dollar for dollar?
Okay, I'll get to explain that in a second, but.
Yeah, okay.
I presume, I haven't asked this of Rebecca yet, but when the money comes in from individual donors, that'll be tracked separately. It won't be commingled with the balance of what.
We would put it into a different line item.
So the exact dollar amount will be tracked, separate from the solid waste money that comes in from the billing of our water bill, for example.
Okay. And is there a balance remaining at Pathfinders now that will have to come forward?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what this, one of the, Mayor Borger is talking about. So the job description was written, and City Administrator Reiner signed off on it. So our first motion at committee was to ask council to accept that job description as a city employee. So I'll make that motion, I guess.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy. Any discussion? Sing none. Go ahead and call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
The second motion is to, was to recommend to council that the city commit year-two funding to the tune of fifteen thousand dollars from the solid waste fund to help pay for the salary of the sustainability coordinator as a city employee. So I'd make that motion.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to pay the fifteen thousand for the second year. Any discussion? Sing none, please call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
No.
Toohill?
Yes.
Okay, that passed, but there was one dissent.
Did we already do that? Have we done that?
No, we did it for one year.
We committed to the second year, but didn't, okay, all right.
Okay.
That's what I recall.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Doug.
Finally, Pathfinders has funds to the tune of about forty-eight thousand dollars and not the exact amount.
I don't have the exact amount. It'll be slightly less than that because we spent some money on things like.
Oh, would you come to the microphone, please? Sorry, Marg, I should have said that.
It'll be slightly less than forty-eight thousand because we spent some money putting these together, and we'll be sending out some information to donors. And it'll, Pathfinders had originally said that that should come out of that money. So we'll be doing, submitting bills for that, but it'll be someplace between forty-five thousand and forty-eight thousand that'll come over to the city.
But that will be sufficient to pay for salary?
Will get you started.
And the benefits, et cetera?
It'll get you started while we raise second-year money.
Okay.
Right, but with the fifteen thousand, that'll come to sixty-three thousand dollars.
Okay. Great. Thanks for the clarification for everyone.
One other clarification, if I may.
Thank you.
The other value of having the city as a fiscal agent is that, I understand, people who are making donations can still get a tax deduction because it's for public purpose.
Yes, the donors will write checks directly to the city for the sustainability coordinator position, and they'll be deposited into the account that Rebecca sets up for that purpose. And since it's, is it seventy, one seventy A that you?
It's, yes, one seventy A and E.
Under those provisions of Iowa code, people can take.
It's the IRS code.
IRS code, I'm sorry. People can take the tax deduction because the donation is for a public purpose. The city's not a five oh one C three, but they can receive monies toward a public purpose and take a tax deduction. So there's forty-eight, that's money over here in, Pathfinders is private money that was raised by the team, and we'd like to transfer that over to Rebecca and have her put it into that account. So my motion is to allow the city to receive those funds.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen? Any discussion? No, please call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thank you. The other issue that the committee considered on Thursday was a issue with a resident who has not been receiving refuse or recycling pickup for quite a number of years and has contracted privately with Connolly to have their trash picked up. And they had asked that the city relieve them of the obligation of paying for recycling and refuse pickup. So we didn't have the contract in front of us, so I'm pretty sure that'd be a violation of our contract waste management rule. We're looking into that to find out what the details are and see if we can resolve this issue with this particular resident. So there's no action taken.
Okay, thank you.
I did, I did go to waste management today, but the fellow that I needed to speak with had to take his wife to a doctor's appointment that was unexpected, so I didn't get to fulfill that. Sorry.
Okay.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Property committee, you have anything else?
Nothing else, Mary, no.
Okay. And personnel committee?
We didn't have any notes for tonight, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks. Administrator and department reports. Administrator report?
I had the opportunity earlier in the last couple of weeks to meet with the Lions Club and Leadership Fairfield with, with the mayor. I'd like to say I enjoy those things very much, getting out to meet new people, but I met with the Sierra Club out of the ECO Lab. They actually threw a reception. They actually threw a reception to help me get to know everyone in that circle and I was very impressed by the facility and the amount of work they put into it. So I had a really good time meeting everyone and going out there. A couple of things that may need to move forward onto committee, but I have been working on our compost and brush pile since I've been here and trying to work out the logistics and the problems that we're having. And I have discussed with the street superintendent that we are having a problem with the lack of control. We're having contractors from not only locally, but other cities and they are just dumping and dumping and dumping and we have no, we have no control over that site. They've done city brush cleanup, the site is full. And he has asked me to ask the council until we actually, we have an alternative site. Even if we do additional grinding, we have way too much material to dispose of and it will just keep building and building over a period of next year and the year after. It's, we're accumulating it faster than we can get rid of it. And it's costing the city thousands and thousands of dollars. So we're looking into this additional site and out at the ski club and I, we're still working on, you know, trying to get in there and be able to reduce our stock and maybe, and burn that. But he has asked if I would go to council and see if they had an opinion, if there was some way that we would be able to, the idea is, is limit the access to only Saturday and Sunday so that these contractors do not have access to our site and they'll have to store that stuff either on their own trailers or take it to their own properties to dispose of it instead of having the, putting that obligation onto the city. And that, this is a problem, I don't know if any of you have driven out to that site, but it's massive and it's, I don't know what sort of liabilities that could come with it, but we were going to need to act quickly. So that, that one in particular site needs to be giving me some guidance and I can move us forward into a different direction. And at this time, I'll stand for questions if there are any for right now. I'll sit for questions.
If we're having problems with contractors coming in dumping unlawfully now, what are we going to do with the new site to prevent the same thing from happening?
The new site will have zero access to the public. This is the next site. We want to maintain the site that we currently have for the convenience of the citizens. The other site will have zero access to the public. It is a disposal burn site that we will only, only have to burn maybe once or twice a year to get rid of the inventory that we have because we'll get new inventory in the future. I don't know how long has the burn, the compost site that we've had, has it been there a decade?
Longer.
Longer than that. So it's considerably gotten worse and it's individuals taking advantage of the city.
So the second site, citizens won't even visit? They only go to the existing site?
That's correct.
Okay.
But typically, the average citizen is going out there and using that facility on a Saturday and Sunday. That's when most people have their days off, but they could, you know, definitely make different arrangements with us that we would always accommodate those sorts of things. But right now, even though we have a sign up that says no contractors, contractors coming in. And even if we saw contractors in there, we have no recourse, there's no fines, there's no, we wouldn't even approach those contractors because we're not any sort of enforcement agency. So that's kind of where we're at.
One of the questions that came up when that plan was first put together was whether we should allow contractors who are working on a citizen's, you know, residence property, whether they would be allowed to take brush to that site on behalf of the resident. And I think we denied that request. Said no contractor could go there, even if they were doing work in town for a taxpayer. But we might want to revisit that question. I don't know how to do it, but. I'm wondering if the contractors that you're seeing are the ones that are doing that?
I think it would still be a fine line. I mean, if we're going to say no contractors, then when they take the job, they're going to be aware of the fact that if there is material they need to dispose of, they're going to have to think about where they're going to dispose of it, not locally in ours. So I guess that's my thoughts that I, I mean, not that I'm trying to be negative about it, but since it has become such a headache, I think we have to sort of determine what is going to be needing to be done.
I think the idea was they were being paid to remove and dispose, so.
To dispose of it.
Yeah.
And they're making more profit if they take it out to our site and don't dispose of it. According to how they bid it out, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know.
Are you asking for committee input with this or what are you, what do you?
I'm asking for guidance and whether it goes to committee, that's fair. But the street department is getting extremely nervous considering what the site looks like. And I, you know, want to reduce any sort of risk that we may pose or have. You know, something could happen and.
Like what? Like what?
Well, as that site sets and dries, it could potentially have a fire risk. And that would be something that could be a problem and I would rather, something like that not, you know, we don't have a, that's sort of a risk in the center of town. And that's a problem that we've, or we just have people that just are dumping and then eventually it gets out of the road. People start calling us and saying, do something with your site. So, you know, those, that disposal, and we may have to go ahead and spend the additional twenty-five thousand dollars to have some of it ground, but it's going to be more than we can even handle. We're still going to have to haul it off that site and then people will continue to bring in more. So the issue is compounding quickly.
Do we have time to have a committee meeting before next meeting? I mean, I know we're picking up right now, correct?
No, it's done.
It's all done?
It's done.
Oh, wow, they're fast.
They are fast.
I know, the road, the road that's out there now to drive through there has narrowed down greatly. I mean, you can, it's tight to drive all the way through there. And the stuff that people are dumping in there now is bigger than what the intention was. I mean, it was supposed to be grass and brush and limbs and stuff. There's big stuff out there right now that people are, it's not properly being put somewhere, it's just being dumped. So it does need to either stop temporarily until they can manage it or be very limited to the point where they can maintain what's being brought in. Because if it gets any, if there's any more than what's out there right now, they're not, they're not going to get equipment in there. It's that bad.
If we were to support the Saturday, Sunday only until further notice, do we have the means to block it off?
They have gates, yeah.
Yeah.
And you can't just drive around them?
No, they're big, they're like big, I call them cattle gates.
Cattle panels?
Yeah.
So we can just make the motion to gate it off except for Friday, Saturday and Sunday? Is that what you're asking?
He said Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, Saturday and Sunday or Friday, Saturday and Sunday?
Friday, Saturday and Sunday would probably be fine.
So I'll make that motion to disallow use on Monday through Thursday. Only on Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Second by Tohill? Any other discussion?
Will there be any oversight during Friday, Saturday and Sunday or is it just going to be the same way it is now?
I can discuss that with the superintendent, but no, it'll just be open.
Okay.
What's going to happen if people can't even get in to dump it and they're dumping it on the road out there or something like that?
We have, we do have large pieces of equipment, we'll have to shove it up and just push it up as best we can.
Will you have some sort of signage that when it will be open so they know? So that they, you know, for those that would be conscientious, wouldn't just leave their stuff out in the roadway, but they would know when they could drop?
I'll get with them and they should be able to have signs made.
One other question, do we own that roadway or are we leasing that roadway?
Yeah, is that all FEDA? FEDA's land?
Yes.
Is the roadway even FEDA's land or is that who is behind?
No, I think it's FEDA's as well.
It's not dedicated, Tom.
It's not?
No.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll nicely ask the public, don't leave it outside the gate. Please wait until Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Oh, but we need to vote on that.
Yeah.
So all the, why don't you call the roll?
Okay, Florinoy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
The next item that I added to my report was five oh four South Sixth and I've had multiple discussions even this weekend and this morning. And there's two options to deal with this house of us taking it to the ground. One is bidding it out, it will be considerably more expensive, but we would be able to expedite the process, get in there, get it done and then we can move on to the next phase of this lot. The second thing that was brought to my attention was burning the house down. It would be substantially less expensive, but it will increase our risk. Now, by the DNR standards, we can burn two houses down per year, but speaking with the fire chief and we had discussed having this big training exercise to present to council. However, logistically, this could be a bigger problem than we think. That, you know, the fire chief had explained to me that if the council decides that they would like to burn this house down, they can do it and they would do it if they're instructed to do so. However, he wanted to point out the risks that we would be taking. That one, there's probably going to be public pushback that, you know, we've got smoke and it's getting into our houses, what have you. We have neighboring houses around there getting soot, getting into their houses. That there could be a potential for spot fires, that the weather conditions have to be just perfect because if it's not, we could potentially have a wind gust that either pushes the fire up or back. It could, there's so many risks that he was very concerned about. And then making sure that if the conditions weren't right, that they would just fill the town with smoke. I know that in the past, there have been houses that have been burnt before, but they were probably on the edges of town, I'm not real sure. And they've denied permits for other people to do, burn their construction materials well. So no matter what those things are, we could save money by burning that house down and then having the street department remove the debris that's left.
How much, what's the difference between bringing it down and bidding it out?
So they were estimating three to five thousand dollars burning it down and having us remove it. The cost to just tear it down could be anywhere from twelve to fifteen thousand dollars estimated and it might be a little bit higher than that. So there's those two things. And all I can do is present to you what has been talked to me about and let the governing body decide what they would like to do best.
So those costs include disposal?
That's what they're estimating the disposal would be.
I mean, hauling off too.
I'm going to take it out to the brush site.
I was going to say, we can take it.
Jason, would you be so kind as to pull that up on satellite? Like just Google Maps?
Is it considered hazardous material?
I'm sorry.
Is there any concern that it could be considered hazardous part of it?
Not from Weston's perspective that we would have, that we would definitely have to test for asbestos.
Just based on the small image on my phone, thankfully, there's not a lot of trees on that lot.
I'd say we take it down and not burn it, it's too risky for a small amount of money that we would save.
I agree, yeah, that makes sense. Don't we have the funds somewhere for that? Quite a bit, quite a bit, don't we?
We have, I believe, sixty thousand dollars to tear down.
Now, that'll leave an empty foundation?
We would, we would put it in the bid packet to tear the house down and then level off the site so that it's a clean site to be, however we, the governing body would like to dispose of it.
It is a corner lot.
It is.
Yeah, it's at the corner of Monroe and Sixth.
Yep, just to the right, right?
No, it's right there. So it does have a property to the west of it, like immediately to the west of it.
I'd just say tear it down, I wouldn't risk it by burning it. You don't know what's going to happen. It's just not worth it, ten thousand dollars.
There's trees between that little house and the house to the north too where.
You don't know what kind of problems people run their head.
Yeah, our fire chief is not painting a good picture of us taking that chance. There's no reason to. We have the funds.
Want to make that motion, Doug?
Yeah, make the motion that we contract, contract to have it taken down.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to contract to have that taken down? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you, passed.
So the last few things, we had a meeting with, I thought there was going to be a Carnegie report, but we had a meeting with Gloria Countryman and they, I'm sorry?
Melanie's got one.
Melanie, so I'm going to let her handle that. The next thing that we've been talking about is the Alliant Energy proposal that we have actually sent the lease agreement back to others at Cooney and they've resent those remarks back to the attorney and then I'm still waiting on the responses from legal counsel to decide if there's any language changes and then hopefully we can move forward because they're ready to go and getting that done. And then the last thing in my report is budget preparation. Again, you're aware that I'm changing a few things with our budget presentations and I am extremely impressed with our department heads and superintendents bringing back their information so that I can add that, so that our budgets will be explained to the public and they'll be able to ask questions. And I'm pretty excited, hopefully, everything goes well this year. That's all I have.
Okay, for the Carnegie Museum, Gloria has been in here before to talk with you about the things that the foundation is doing. And we realized that I don't think we had an actual motion from the council to proceed with their next project. So their next project is to replace forty-six windows on the Carnegie building. They'll be in the same shape and style as the existing ones, but rather than a wood frame that would be original to the building, they are going with an aluminum frame in a bronze brown color. And this is, they feel like it will look very nice, but keep us from having to replace the windows again in thirty years. They are also on the windows adding a gray tint to it, visible from the outside to help preserve the elements that are in the Carnegie Museum on the third floor and the first floor and, you know, maybe someday on the second floor. But they, so they are putting in the tinted windows. I mean, that's about the basics of it, so it is being paid entirely through the foundation with no, maybe a city, not even city lost, I don't believe.
No, I think the house was just.
There's also a bid in there for blinds on all of the, on the inside of the building.
Yes, yep.
The lost money we gave them is for the.
Tuck point.
That was for the tuck point. Yep, so entirely through the foundation. So since it is a city building, though, we would just like a motion to allow them to proceed with this project.
Motion to approve?
Second.
By Anderson, second by Tohill, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Great, thank you, passed. And that's it, she walked away. I guess, I guess that's all. She was short. Okay, that is the end of our agenda, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Tohill, second by Ham. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned, thank you council for your time, appreciate it.